I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, February 23rd, 2023, regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now called to order, as you please stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We do have some very special VIP guests with us who are going to help lead this moment for us, and I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy to introduce them at this time.
Thank you Chair Patillo. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to our meeting tonight. I have the pleasure of recognizing two wonderful individuals that will be sharing the Pledge of Allegiance as well as the school statement. Here this evening, we have Lakeview Elementary School. And I will start with the pledge. And as I call each student's name, will you please come forward towards the podium? For the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Kenley Smith. Kenley is a first grader at Lakeview Elementary School. Outside of school, Kenley enjoys gymnastics and participating in church. She wants to work in school and be a teacher when she grows up. We have a job for you.
Yes, we do.
She is also joined by Ms. Victoria Smith, her proud mother. She's also joined tonight by her godfather, grandmother, and brother. And parents and representatives, if you're here, please stand. Next, with our school statement, we have Joshua Peel. Joshua is a sixth grader at Lakeview Elementary School. He has maintained a high academic standards and has earned honor rolls since kindergarten. Outside of school, he enjoys playing basketball with the Portsmouth Wildcats. Joshua plans to go to college and become a video game creator. His proud parents, Mr. and Mrs. Peel, are here with him tonight. And Mr. and Mrs. Peel, will you all please stand to be recognized? All right, at this time, I will turn it over to... Okay, I will turn it over to Kenley for the pledge. And parents, feel free to come to the front of the podium so you can get a good picture. Come on up. We encourage that.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see it.
Good job.
Thank you, Kenley. Joshua, we'll pass it to you now for the school statement.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, school board members, Portsmouth staff members, students, families, and all others who are here tonight. My name is Joshua Peel, and I am a sixth grader at Lakeview Elementary School. I have been a student at Lakeview since kindergarten. What I love most about my school is how good the food is in our cafeteria and how fun it is to learn. Our teachers make the lessons very exciting and are very nice. Encore is really fun, too. Arts and PE classes are my favorite. Lakeview is accredited, and we work hard each day to make sure students show growth and meet the academic standards. I enjoy redeeming my class dojo points to get prizes from my PBIS store every month. We have fun school spirit days and school-wide reading competitions. This year, we have partnered with IC Norcom's National Honor Society students who come over to mentor our students. Some of our extracurricular activities include blush group for fifth and sixth grade girls, trailblazers group for fifth and sixth grade boys, chess club, Lady Finn's cheer team, fantastic ballers basketball team, steel pan drumming club, SOL tutoring, young audiences string program, and so much more. Lakeview is proud to be home of the Dolphins, where each day we recite our creed that says we are destined to be great, to achieve our best. We promise to be focused on learning, acting respectful, never irresponsible, continuing to safety where you and I are in control. We invite each of you to visit anytime to see all of the things, all the wonderful things we have going on at Lakeview. I would like to give each of you a card from me and our Lakeview family. Thank you for listening and enjoy the meeting tonight. Thank you.
And also with us tonight, we have Ms. Garen Moody, who's the principal, proud principal of Lakeview Elementary School. And is Ms. Megan Parker present? Yes, Ms. Megan Parker, you can come forward as well.
Joshua, I wish you'd come back for a second.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to present both of you with a small token of appreciation for coming out tonight and doing such a wonderful job. Thank you very much. I just want to say to you that Lakeview is a wonderful school. All four of our children attended Lakeview, and all of them enjoyed their time there and have gone on to do great things. So I'm looking forward to the great things that both of you will do. Thank you so much.
Ms. Moody, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. We would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to allow Lakeview to share tonight, and we are just so proud of Kenley and Joshua and all the students at Lakeview Elementary School. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. From one proud Dolphin to another, thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5 is a school board mission statement that will be read by Dr. Whitaker.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6 is attendance, roll call vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Boone?
Present.
Dr. Cotton?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Schumay?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Present.
Eight members present.
Thank you so much. Before I call for a motion on the agenda, I would like to make a slight change of the agenda and remove Agenda Item 5.1, Student Representative Report. She just stated that she won't be able to attend on tonight, so I will entertain a motion with that change at this time.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, and second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 4.1 is the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? Now, we'll open it up to the public at this time. If we have any speakers in regards to the proposed fiscal year 23-24 budget, you may come at this time. Thank you. All right, seeing those speakers, I will move forward to Agenda Item 6.1. Will be a consideration of a resolution for recognizing Youth Art Month. Ms. Nalasco.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Whereas, Youth Art Month is observed annually during March as a means of emphasizing the roles of the arts in public education, and whereas this yearly celebration helps students develop a lifelong appreciation for critical thinking and creativity, and whereas the arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of school environments, and whereas the Council for Art Education Incorporated and Art and Creative Materials Incorporated have designated March as Youth Art Month, selecting "Your Art, Your Voice" as the theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board recognizes March as Youth Art Month, leading our community in supporting arts education, and further resolve that this resolution be made a part of the school board's official minutes and that copies be forwarded to all schools and administrative offices.
Thank you so much. And before we have a motion for that, I would like to recognize Ms. Taylor Martin, who's in charge of our art department, who's here with us on the night, and I'd like to thank her for her hard work as well. Okay, I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion been made. You have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda Item 6.2, consideration of a resolution recognizing music in our schools month. Ms. Nalasco.
Whereas, music develops students' listening and reading skills, collaboration and creativity, and whereas, music education includes a broad range of genres and active experiences, and whereas, music along with the visual arts significantly enhances the morale and quality of our learning environments, and whereas, Portsmouth's public schools have primarily responsibility of preparing and encouraging young people to assume a productive role in society, and whereas, the National Association for Music Educators has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month and has selected "Music is All of Us" as this year's theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board recognizes the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support music education and that our entire community is encouraged to join in this special recognition, and be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's official minutes and that copies be forwarded to all schools and administrative offices.
I entertain a motion at this time?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 6.3, consideration of a resolution recognizing Employee Appreciation Day. Ms. Nalasco.
Whereas, a free and equitable education is an essential aspect of our America's strength, and whereas, the Portsmouth Public Schools are vital to the success of our communities, and whereas, our schools share the responsibility for academic excellence in Portsmouth to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship, and whereas, the exceptional personnel of this school division dutifully guard the academic and social well-being of our students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the first Friday of March has been designated as Employee Appreciation Day, and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extend its sincere appreciation to our dedicated professional and support personnel who provide high-quality educational programs and services for our youth, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's official minutes.
Thank you so much. Motion made by Ms. Hines?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 6.4, consideration of a resolution recognizing School Social Workers Week. Ms. Nalasco.
Whereas, school social workers are vital to advancing the vision and mission of Portsmouth Public Schools, and whereas, our social workers generously share their crafts, making lasting contributions to the education of our youth, and whereas, school social workers' exemplary service can ever be a model for all who aspire to contribute to our schools. Now, whereas, the National Association of School Social Workers has designated the week of March 5th through the 11th as School Social Workers Week and has selected "Social Work Breaks Barriers" as this year's theme. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extend its sincerest appreciation and gratitude to all school social workers for their commitment to advancing our youth, and be it further resolved that all school division personnel be encouraged to observe School Social Workers Week, March 5th through the 11th, demonstrating our profound gratitude for our school social workers' continued support, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the board's official minutes and that an executive copy be sent to all schools and administrative offices throughout the division.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. And I know we do have, I'm going to ask Dr. Foster to come up at this time, and also members of the IC Norcom Alumni Association that are present, if they can come forward.
I thought she was so weird.
Whereas, the first school constructed by the city of Portsmouth for African-American students was the Chestnut Street Colored School, built in 1878 and run by Principal Israel Charles Norcom. And whereas, Norcom, who was born in Edington, North Carolina in September 1856 and came to Portsmouth after attending the Andover School, a Yale University prep school, Hampton Institute, and the University of Virginia, remained the school's principal until his death in March of 1916. And whereas, as a tribute, the Portsmouth School Board renamed the Chestnut Street School in Norcom's honor. And whereas, IC Norcom High School was relocated in both 1937 and 1953 before moving to its current location on London Boulevard in 1998. And whereas, February is celebrated as Black History Month to honor the groundbreaking work and achievements of African-Americans throughout this country's history. And whereas, IC Norcom High School has provided a high-quality education to thousands of students since its founding, opening new doors of opportunities specifically for the African-American community in Portsmouth. And now therefore, be it resolved that tomorrow, February 24th, be recognized as IC Norcom High School Appreciation Day throughout Portsmouth Public Schools.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second.
We got a little excited.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, and second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got it.
Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Most definitely.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
For you.
Mrs. Thomas?
The school that we love best.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
I think I'm dressed apart.
It's unanimous.
Yes, you know, thank you so much.
On behalf of everyone standing before us and the gray hounds standing in front of us, I'm honored and humbled to always stand before you and recognize a historic black high school with excellence in academic sports and good citizenship. We accept this honor, thank you for the recognition, and again, this support system is galvanized again as we continue to move forward and the greatness at IC Norcom High School. 1801 London Boulevard in our city. Thank you.
Oh, gray hounds.
Gray hounds.
All right, thank you so much. Agenda Item 7.1, public comment, non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Chairman, we do have four speakers.
All right.
As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the school board of the city of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the school board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to ear their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to remain, to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual, personal student or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speakers' comments can be left with the clerk of the board, and any matter regarding a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens to public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Our first speaker is Mrs. Brenda Joseph.
Ms. Joseph? We'll come back if she comes in. Next speaker?
Mrs. Monique Cooper.
Good evening, Ms. Cooper.
Good evening to you all. This is my first time coming to a school board meeting, so I don't know how to address you all, but I do respect you all. And I am coming from, my kids go to Parkview Elementary. I've read through the school handbook, so I thought I could be comfortable and have a voice at my school, but unfortunately, I've come across some issues where I'm not really being heard out because my son, Nimai, here, he's actually a special needs student, and I need some assistance with going through the school, my principal, and the social worker at our school, because I keep getting kicked back. I've reached out to the Portsmouth Public School Board a few times, but what they've been doing is sending the messages to the school, and then it's like they're still not helping me, so I'm in a circle. So I was coming to see if I could speak to you all, to see if I could get some help, but I know you can't reply back to me right now, so I'm going to stay back if I can to speak to you all about our situation in depth, because I don't want to break any laws by saying too much. And that's all.
Ms. Cooper correct?
Yes, sir.
If you could make sure that you leave your information with Lauren, she's the second person there?
Yes, sir.
And I'll guarantee you'll have a call back tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. William Britt?
Good evening, Mr. Britt. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I got a serious issue. I want to thank you, all the ones that I talked to on the phone that had enough common courtesy to call me back, with the exception of two of you that did not call me back after I left numerous messages pertaining to my grandson and him getting in trouble in school. He got expelled for a year, and I got a serious problem with that. Never been in trouble a day in his life. We went to court-
Mr. Britt, this is Adam Carroll, school board counsel. I spoke to you. I'm over here, sir. I spoke to you about the rules and that student discipline matters shouldn't be discussed in the open comment section. Now, we've given you a process for how to address those issues with the administration of the division, so you can certainly address your concerns to the school board about what you signed up to speak to about tonight, which was matters about accreditation and performance of the superintendent, but we really need to make sure that the matters remain private among your son and the disciplinary process.
All right, first off, I'd like to get my time back since you interrupted there, and like I said, I understand what you're saying, but it's not, because I do not have custody of him, I still have the rights to address the council. All right? So it's, and I'm not bringing up the matters of the situation because I do not want to embarrass my grandson.
Just make sure you just don't use names and keep the comments general, if you don't mind, sir.
Absolutely. So once again, getting back to, I appreciate everybody that called me and had enough common courtesy to talk to me about this situation. Thank you. And one of the other members of the board, you got my condolences on your mother. So we got a serious issue here. He got expelled for a year. Trying to get him back into school is like pulling teeth, all right? When we went to court, the judge even said there's a problem with the Portsmouth school system, with drugs and with other issues. And I don't see this being addressed by nobody in the school system. Under the present school superintendent, we have not met state standards in the last five years. So I cannot perceive how we have this individual employed paying him over $200,000 a year and not doing the job. And these are statistical averages right here, all right? As you see, my grandson is African-American. If you look at the statistical averages here, 72.7% of the students in the Portsmouth school system are African-American. 17.5 white, 4.2 other races, and 4.2 Hispanic, Asian, 0.7, so forth, so on. So most of the school, the kids in the schools here are African-American, all right? So what we're saying here is to have a school system that's failed the students. It's all right because they're African-American? I mean, you know, like I said, it's not a black-white issue for me. I got businesses here in the city of Portsmouth, I pay a lot of daggone taxes in property taxes, all right? We have the highest tax rate, we have the worst school system, and we still have employed the same school superintendent. I don't understand this. It really upsets me, and I got questions about what has transpired here. We're not meeting academic standards. Looking at these graphs here, state at 100%, you're looking at 80% on reading and math, Portsmouth is 72%. On reading, Portsmouth is 70%, state's at 77%. On math, Portsmouth 74%, state's at 82%. We got a major problem, and if you think this is good schooling, we got a problem, all right? And it really offends me, and like I said, most of the kids that are in this school are African-American, and by the standards that we're following, it's all right to push them through school? I'm not talking about retention. I could care less about retention and graduation, all right? You could push them through without educating them just to get your numbers, and that's what we got here, and I got a problem with this. All right, I got a problem with kicking somebody out of school for a year after one offense and then trying to get them back into school. I can't get them into private school. I cannot get him into a school for online because of the standards of the Portsmouth school system. When you got judges, and the judge who he was in front of was an African-American judge who brought up the issue about the school system, the narcotics in the school system, the problems we have, and the other problems. He had A/B average when he was going to Chesapeake. He gets down to Portsmouth, he got a C/D average, all right? And he was in, we're talking about vaping in the bathroom, you know, drugs and all that. We got a problem.
Sir, please.
I'm sorry?
I don't want to, I want to protect your grandson's rights as well.
All right, I understand that, and I appreciate that, because like I said, I do love him, far as I'm concerned. He's my own blood. He's my god-grandson, and I'm going through the extremes. Until he got in trouble, I did not know how bad the school systems were here in Portsmouth. And I talked to the city council many times- And I talked to the City Council many times about some of the issues we have here. And we got crime that's out of hand, we got the school system that's broken, and I cannot perceive how, and I grew up in Jersey. If we didn't move out of Jersey, Joe Clark would have been my principal. All right? I was in South Jersey. And I don't understand how we have a broken system here.
Let me give you 30 seconds back.
Thank you. I don't understand how we got a broken system here, how we could keep the present system in play. When you got, the principal would not call, I mean, not the principal, Dr. Bracy would not call us, the Assistant Superintendent would not call us, I'm talking about his mother. We got absolutely no response back from nobody under supervision pertaining to this situation. Nobody. So that gives me an idea that really, the administration don't give a crap. It's all about numbers. It's not about education, it's about numbers. Retention and passing these kids through without education. And you know, if we're talking about African-American kids, this is not a good thing. We need to have them basically at the state level, not below the state level, just to get our numbers. We don't need to push them through. I appreciate that, guys. Thank you.
Dr. Cotton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Britt, for your condolences, but some information that I was trying to obtain, I was able to get this afternoon because of work earlier. So I still will give you a call offline, certain things I can't speak about in here. And upon coming, well, first of all, I'm a product of Portsmouth Public Schools. And I also moved from Chesapeake some years ago. My son is an eighth grader, excuse me, a seventh grader. And coming from Chesapeake to Portsmouth, he was a part of the Abbott Program in Chesapeake. He's now a part of the Gifted and Talented Program. I think, I'm thankful for all of our staff that we have, and I'm gonna address this publicly because we're speaking publicly.
Correct.
So I did my research about coming on board even before I ran for this seat, and I wanted to know more about Dr. Bracy. I can say, as I asked, he never has gotten a raise. And as I looked through the record, when he first came on board, we had six schools that were, had proper accreditation. Now we're up to 14 of 19. I think that's superlative. As I continued to look, things he's done enhanced the CTE, it's like the 14th generation. What I mean by that is that there has been additions added to it to give our students more options upon graduation. The first time college is a big hit. And part of the reason I wanted to be in Portsmouth, not just because it's home and I wanted to serve the community, my son is also, he chose not to graduate early in the seventh grade, he chose to do the first college, so he'll graduate with an associate's degree. And I can, I can understand your concern, but let me know, Chair, if I'm going too far. I remember this matter, however, I was looking for representation during that hearing, and there wasn't any.
Yes, that's too much.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Chair.
I don't know what you mean by that.
I can't speak on it. We'll talk. I'll call.
Yeah, you got my number, give me a call.
Yeah, I sure do. So as I look as the Board, now, he's highly sought after. I was able to recently share with him at a conference. And just as recently as last week, I do know that, you know, other districts desire to have him. And I just need you to really trust and believe that if you do a little more research, you'll see some of those numbers, as we discussed, are off. But I've done a very deep study into the history of our current Superintendent. And I think, I know that he has a wonderful staff, even with how the cabinet is set up, those are my words, cabinet. And if something got lost along the way, I apologize. I can't speak to that, but I definitely will give you a call. But if you look at even just as recently, as being promoted as President of the Urban Superintendents, I mean, he has a wonderful record, and I think that it's a great thing to have him in the City of Portsmouth. I don't want one isolated incident to kind of make us lose something good that we have. To go from six to 14 schools with proper accreditation, that says a lot, Mr. Britt.
But when you're below state standards, we got an issue. And like I said, you and I, we could talk, maybe meet up one day, and you could show me the statistical averages you got, and I'll go over mine. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, but I-
I'm not one to point fingers. I'm not after anybody's job. But it's basically, I got an issue. I got a serious issue with this.
And the last thing, as a Board member, hoping that I have the public's confidence, I just wanted to give them some other numbers that we have that are positive. So that's why I'm speaking to this matter. But we'll talk. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate your time, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, other members of Portsmouth City Public Schools. My name is Michael Whittleton, Sr. I live in the 3,000 block of Davison Avenue in the city of Hopewell, Virginia. I drove down here tonight to advocate for my son. I had something written down, but due to discretion, I'm not going to read it. But what I would like to do is, if allowed to, leave this with this Board so that you can read what I wanted to speak about and see what's in my heart. And that's all I have to say. If allowed to present this, I would like to present it.
Yes, sir. You can give it to the clerk. Thank you so much.
And I thank you all for this time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers for non-agenda items? Thank you. Agenda item 7.2, public comment for Board Agenda Items. Do we have any speakers? Thank you. Consent Agenda Items, 8.1 through 8.10, I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second, by Ms. Boone. Ms. Hines, discussion?
Thank you, Chair. I do see reappropriations of the final 21, 22 general fund encumbrances, all to the general fund, to the grant fund, to the textbook fund. Did we do this already, or was it City Council that approved it, and it's now back to us for the final? Because I think, I thought we had done this. Mr. Falk, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I just, when we deal with money, you know, I always like to make it transparent and make sure everybody understands what we're doing. And I know that City Council has talked about these reappropriations, and so I'm just curious as to an explanation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So these particular reappropriations are for the final audit that you guys, that was presented in January. And these balance the numbers from the final audit to the preliminary numbers that we brought to you back in September that were approved by Council in November. So these balance to the audit so that our budget matches exactly what's in the audit period. Pretty much, they're the encumbrances. So the encumbrances back in, when we brought it to you in September were a number they changed during the audit process. These balance everything so that as we move forward, we balance to the audit.
Okay. Can I ask one other question?
Yes, you can.
Because, thank you, sir, because I had a conversation with somebody who was asking about reencumbrances not showing up in the general fund until this point. So these numbers have been added to our general fund?
Yes, ma'am. Added or subtracted, depending on the fund. So basically, how this works, when you go through the financial reporting process, numbers go up, they go down.
Right.
You go through your audit. In the case of encumbrances, we may have encumbered something as of 6:30, but let's say it was on back order, and we couldn't get it, or it wasn't available, or there was a supply chain shortage. So we would cancel that encumbrance. Therefore, that encumbrance would go down. And to make sure that everything balanced, we want to bring it back to the table to make sure that when we go through the year, everything balances. When we get to the audit of this year, we can show the auditors we balanced this to the penny.
Okay. I think that answers my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Atkinson?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Falk, I just, I just have one question regarding justification on award for a contract for, I think it falls under professional services, and it's printer products and services, and it was awarded to the University of California. And it looks like there was no solicitations issued out for it. And we actually have, based on our research, Rico, it was a Rico contract, there's 303 vendors statewide and six MWVE vendors in the Hampton Roads area. So I guess I'm wondering what was the justification for cooperative contract? And also, I'm looking at the term of the contract, and I know we spoke on giving five-year terms to vendors.
Yes, ma'am. So in this particular contract, this is for Rico copiers. We lease our copiers. We have Rico copiers in our schools right now. There was a cooperative contract that was approved back, I believe it was maybe 2017, but don't quote me, that ran out. So we're going back to re-up that contract at this point. The thing with copiers are this, we have copiers in all of our buildings. So when you go to co-ops for this purpose, if we change that particular vendor, we would have to, if indeed we change, we'd have to take all those copiers out of the school and then re-put them into the schools with whatever that vendor is. I've been through this in the School Division. It's not fun, because it's not just a contract where you, oh, we just have to do this and remove, because they're leased, they have to come get them, you have to put more in. This is the most efficient and effective way to do this. When you look at the letter, let me, let me speak to that, too. Just because there are 303 vendors, and I agree with you, we do have vendors, that doesn't mean that all those vendors can supply these particular items. There are vendors that have that SIC code or that commodity code. That doesn't mean that they can supply the copiers. In the copier industry, and I give you, I won't call the names, but there are about four big companies that have copiers. They have recommended or required suppliers. All of these companies can't supply the copiers because they have distributors that they work with. They may be able to get us toner, they may be able to get us some components for the copier, but pretty much you're going with the manufacturer of that copier when you do this. So it's not effective and advantageous in many cases, especially when you have copiers in, to do a solicitation in this regard, especially when we have six in this area, because you're gonna find that those vendors cannot supply the copiers. You have to go direct to the manufacturer or those people that manufacture the recommended solution for that. Some vendors, some other contracts, you're right, it would make sense, and this one, in my opinion, it doesn't, and that's the opinion of our procurement manager as well.
Thank you. So just to follow up, a vendor wouldn't necessarily have access to a Rico copier? They wouldn't be able to give us Rico?
No, ma'am. They have recommended distributors. Most copier companies work like this. They have recommended distributors. I'll use a background example. When I was in another School Division, one company we worked with, they have a distributor on the peninsula, they have a distributor in the Tidewater area. They're the only two companies that you can lease copiers in the volume that we need. You might be able to find somebody that can get you one. They can't get us copiers for 45 buildings, because they're not allowed to. You have to go to their recommended distributor. That's why this contract is a prime example for a co-op.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further discussion? CNN Road Call Vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.1, monthly report, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Hicks?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board Members and Community Members. I am William Hicks, the Social Studies Coordinator for Portsmouth Public Schools. I would like to bring your attention to the CNI report that is located in your Board Docs, which outlines all of the wonderful things that are happening within curriculum and instruction. But I'm also here tonight to speak on behalf of the Office of Social Studies. We are very excited that all three of our high schools participated in the Model United Nations Conference at ODU this past weekend. Because it was this past weekend, our official video from PSET is not quite available yet. It will be coming very shortly for you. We have to provide that to ODU for their official blessing, but that will be coming. But I did want to give you some highlights of what happened at ODU. The first thing I would like to do is to recognize my wonderful team that helped put this on to get our students there. We had from IC Norcom, represented by Mr. Baker, who was the person that led the group there, they represented the country of Barbados. And in that, he, Mr. Baker, was talking about that collaboration and that, but working with Barbados really stretched our students and caused them to really think outside of what they talk about and get within the United States itself. We then had Brazil, that was represented by Churchland High School. Again, Churchland High School was speaking of the collaboration and that it really sharpened the skills of our students within this process. And then the United Kingdom, which is Ms. Flag, this is Ms. Flag's first year as a sponsor for the United Nations. She, again, was excited about the collaboration, working with kids across the state. And for those of you who do not know about United Nations, our students represent that particular country in both human rights, as well as looking at how those countries get along as far as peacekeeping. They provide and promote measures that would, they try to get passed to bring more harmony within the world itself. I want to share with you a list of students that we had. Again, we were one of the few districts that had all three of our high schools attended, as well as so many students. That's why we were able to garner major countries for our students to be able to represent. For the second year in a row, we not only attended, but were recognized. This year, Jocelyn Plemons from Churchland High School received a verbal commendation in the Human Rights Council. Of all of the schools that were there, they were, our students were singled out, and again, this is the second year that that has happened. That is not something that normally happens at Model UN. There are people that are recognized, but for it to happen two years in a row says a lot about our program and what we are developing. A few pictures of our students and their participation. And again, once I receive the permission from ODU, I will provide that video to you. You can actually hear from our students and how they felt and their actual responses to their involvement. Last thing I would like to say is, our students were focused, they were energetic, they were poised. We got so many comments about how our students participated in this. So I am extremely Portsmouth proud of all three high schools in their participation and Model UN, and the fact that our schools have only started in this approximately five years, and we've made it to this far to receive these recognitions. So again, I am very, very proud of this tonight, and will be extremely proud to share that video with you very shortly. Any questions?
Board Members? Thank you so much, you're a great job. Agenda item 9.2, School Board Appreciation Month, February 2023, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair. And it gives me a privilege to be able to recognize our School Board Members with this being School Board Appreciation Month. Each of you will receive a certificate, and it reads as follows. VSBA School Board Appreciation Month, Rising to the Challenge 2023. And each Board- And each board member will receive their own. So at this time, I will pass these out to you all. Thank you and thanking you in advance for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Agenda item 10.1, the monthly report from the Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Patello, Vice Chair Atkinson and members of the board. First, let me recognize an important celebration that took place earlier this month. February 6th through 10th was National School Counseling Week. This week was a time to spotlight our wonderful school counselors who work directly with our children each and every day. Our school counselors play a vital role, not only in helping students plan out their pathway to graduation, but also serving as a conduit to mental health resources and services. As we know all too well, they've become very important in the recent years. Especially, I have a special place for counselors because I started my career as a school counselor as well. So I want to say thank you to all of our counselors for the work that you do. So we definitely want to make sure that we honored, honored them earlier this month. We also have some upcoming events that will be important for our school community to make a note of. For instance, we are, we have two upcoming parent information sessions tailored to help parents navigate the preschool registration process. As you know, there are specific eligibility requirements for our preschool program. So these sessions will talk through, talk you through the criteria as well as the application process. These sessions will be Wednesday, March 1st, with a morning session from 10:00 to 11:00 and an evening session from 5:00 to 6:00. Both sessions will be at Emily Spahn Center. Whether you're able to attend the sessions or not, you can mark your calendars that preschool registration opens Tuesday, April 4th. Next, our Office of Special Programs is hosting another event for select schools to help replenish school supplies. We're more than halfway done with the school year, so we, we know our students may be in need of some more notebooks, pencils, crayons, you name it. The Special Programs has teamed with Mercy Drops to do a mid-year school supply drive-through. The drive-through will be open for students from eight participating schools, Brighton, Craddock, Douglas Park, Parkview, Simondsdale, Victory, Waterview and West Haven Elementary Schools. The next event will be next Tuesday, February 28th, at Tidewater Community College Portsmouth Campus Parking Lot from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. We encourage all of our families to take advantage of this valuable resource. Thank you, Chairman Patello. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 10.2 is board member comments. And I'll start with Ms. Hines and work our way down.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I wanted to point out, because when I read the curriculum and instruction handout that we get every month, there's two, there's two dates I want to, I first want to talk about is the first robotics team is competing in Blacksburg this coming weekend, March 3rd and 4th. And for those of us that have been around for a minute, we, we know what these robotic competitions are and I always look forward to going to them. And so Churchland High School will host a first robotics competition, March 17th through the 19th. And for those of you that haven't been, it, it's a rodeo. I don't know how else to explain it. For those of you that have been, you know what I'm talking about. But please mark your calendar to make your way out to Churchland High School the weekend of March 17th to see these robotics teams in action. You know, I joke and say, I still don't know how to program a VCR. But these guys have robots that are building other robots to compete against each other. And so it's just, it's phenomenal to see the teamwork, not only from the individual teams, but across, oh, sorry, across school divisions as they problem solve and as they work. And the other thing I wanted to point out, too, and Mr. Hicks did such a good job with Model UN. I was trying to remember what, what country our kids had from my school and we had Qatar. So yes, we, we had a lot of those same conversations. So I was stuck with that. But the other one I have, I wanted to say thank you to our business partners because on page, I don't, I don't, four or five of this CTE or CNI is CTE has placed 10 internships with area businesses. And so I wanted to give a shout out to businesses who have agreed and who are paying some of our students for their, for their work and for their expertise. So Bloom Where You're Planted, Take Five, Kinder Care, Frenzius Kidney Care, PPS Communications, Ost and Taylor Law, Mercy Chefs and Presidential Funeral Services. I just wanted to give you guys a shout out and thank you for partnering with Portsmouth Public Schools and with our, with our students to give them opportunities and internships and for that experience. So I'll look to have a few more partners here pretty soon with that. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I just want to piggyback with our robotics program. Our team in Portsmouth have placed nationally in robotics and higher than any other division in Hampton Roads. And I'm very proud of the program that we have and Mr. Mariner and his group and what they're doing with the robotics program. I also take this time to welcome, at this time, Ms. Boone to your first school board meeting. So I want to welcome you on this evening. And do you have any comments at this time? All right, got you. Dr. Cotton?
Yes, I was able to go to the monthly principals' meeting hosted at IC Norcom this week. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for allowing me to come, sit in, listen. And Dr. Foster for hosting. I see that you all have a pretty extensive thing you lay out every month, addressing things with the schools, straight to the principals. I was also able to make it up to Waters. And I had said a while back that Manor has the best coffee. Waters has taken the cake. So to whoever's listening online, step your game up. I will be visiting a couple of schools this week. I was there so long, they offered me pizza. I didn't eat, but they did give me some fresh lemonade and that just took them over the top. But I will be visiting some more schools, getting to know the staff. And I just appreciate you all and everything that you do. And you're not told that enough, and I just wanted to say that on tonight. So thank you to any staff that may be online or any staff that may be in the building.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, this is just a comment about Dr. Bracy and the excellent job that he has been doing with our school system. We are, we are an urban school district. We have many challenges, including a high poverty rate. And in addition to that, we have limitations in terms of funding, both from the state historically and historically from the city as well. As Dr. Cotton stated, you know, we have moved the ball down the field, so to speak. There still is work to do, but I am fully confident in Dr. Bracy in his ability to move this school district even further forward. And I commend him for the hard work that he has put into this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give kudos out to Parkview and Douglas Park Elementary and also our partnership with the Richmond Ballet. Big advocate for performing arts. The Mind in Motion program was amazing. Our students did a great job as usual. I had the privilege of attending that. Also, I think we covered the robotics piece. Very proud of our robotics program and, and what they do and Mr. Mariner. So I definitely am attending and I enjoy attending every year. So thank you, Board Member Hines, for bringing up that date. Also, February is Black History Month. I, I see in the curriculum document, three doors decorated. Hopefully, that doesn't represent our school division. I'm pretty sure it doesn't. But other than that, happy Black History Month.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Ms. Schumay?
Thank you, Chairman. First, I would also like to say thank you to Dr. Bracy for all of your hard work that you've done throughout the years. There's not too many superintendents that will walk the neighborhoods of an urban area to talk to parents as well as children to get their input on what they would like to see happen in our school system. So I would like to thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty. Next, I would like to say congratulations to Coach Ali and the IC Norcom girls. They play Saturday at 3:00 p.m. at the Norfolk Scope. Don't ask me any additional questions because I don't know too much about sports, but congratulations to her and her team. Next, I had the wonderful opportunity to be invited by Delegate Nadarius Clark. And I was able to take some history students of Churchland High School to the Virginia State Capitol on February 7th. And they really enjoyed themselves. I mean, they were asking questions, they were into it. They got to sit in the old house and the old Senate rooms. They were filled with so much knowledge. And they were also acknowledged from the floor by Delegate Nadarius Clark and on the House side and on the Senate side, they were acknowledged by Senator L. Louise Lucas. So that, that doesn't happen too often. And so they were super excited about that. And they were also greeted by Delegate Don Scott and my friend Delegate Jackie Glass, who made a wonderful speech that day and they got to experience that actually went viral. Let's see. Oh, and we also got to see our fellow, my fellow board members' children who are actually pages for the House and for the Senate up there. So that was a great thing for them to do. They saw their peers, so that was awesome. And I just want to thank Principal Malachi for allowing this to happen and Mr. Illy, and there were some more teachers there and their name is escaping me, but I, I do want to say thank you to them as well for being on the trip and, and just being great teachers that we love and acknowledge and appreciate. Last but not least, and this has nothing to do with the schools in itself, however, she is a, and she was there that day that we went to visit the Capitol. So for Black History Month, I would like to give a good shout out to My Soror and now Congresswoman Jennifer McClellan. She has made history as the first African-American woman to represent Virginia in Congress. So that is my report. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas.
I really don't have much today, Chairman, but I just also will add the shade. But no, I just want to also add to the, to the sentiments that, this is my first term serving on school board. And while, you know, our district is not perfect, no district is, I will say that we have a committed superintendent to fixing issues. I always say my phone calls never go unanswered, no matter how many times, no matter how late, how early. So to me, that's dedication to, a commitment to always getting or doing the right thing and getting it right as right as possible within the constraints that we're working in. So to me, that's what we can, the best we can ask for, for, to me, a great superintendent. So thank you, Dr. Bracy, even though you gave us our thank you certificates, thank you as well for that commitment to find the answer. Sometimes when we're asking for the, the kitchen sink. So thank you. Also want to say to Mr. Hicks, thank you for that presentation. You know, this kind of is going to wrap this up into one thing. We have a lot going on, as you can hear, around Portsmouth Public Schools. And sometimes it, it doesn't get blasted as much. Our marketing does, Lauren, she does a great job. But we have a lot of active programs. Our students are reaching beyond the classroom, stretching themselves to new opportunities. So I just want to say kudos to that. Mr. Hicks, something that stood out to me in your presentation, I saw that the students debated. Like, that's something near and dear to me, to have our students be able to debate and carry an idea or thought or stance through. So thank you for that exposure. I would love that we, if we can get debates through all of our high school, debating clubs through all of our high schools. So I might hit you up on that. And then for Lauren, I do have a question. As I was hearing all of our, all the board members talk, the email that you send us for news and updates, who, does that get posted on our public, on our Portsmouth Public Schools website anywhere?
We can now post that, but it goes to our media listing. So all the local media outlets are on that. School board members, senior staff, all high school principals live in shared as well.
Okay.
It's our media advisory.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a possibility, so I just maybe want to throw that out. If we can put that somewhere where the public can see, because there's a lot of good information that even we do our best to blast out as well. But I just think, like, for example, I'm going to just pull up from your latest one, there's a dual enrollment information session for sixth graders so that they can start getting information about dual enrollment and being prepared as they go to middle school, what classes to take, what type of grades they have to have. So that type of information is vital because we want to increase the standard of excellence for our students. We want more students to be properly prepared for dual enrollment. So that type of information, I know is going to get disseminated at their school level, but if we can even have just another extra layer, if that's not asking too much. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I'd like to thank you all again for joining us on this evening. And I'll say that I was elected almost nine years ago to my first term and my very first action after they called a meeting in order was to vote on a superintendent. And my vote was for Dr. Bracy and I have yet to regret that since then. I went hard for him then, I'll go hard in the paint for him now. So I just want to, want to thank him for, for all that he does. Also, for our teachers and our staff, it was Employee Appreciation Day. I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for all that you do. I was born and raised in the Portsmouth Public School system my entire life. I remember every teacher I've ever had, principal, counselor. I remember custodial staff, especially the cafeteria workers. But I want to say people who work in Portsmouth, they don't do it for the money. They work in Portsmouth because they want to be here. They have every opportunity to go to other school divisions. Everybody's hiring. So if you run across a staff person who was in Portsmouth Public Schools, you should always thank them because they have a choice to be here or to be somewhere else. And they stay here with all of our issues with our poverty, our crime, housing, all the issues we have, resources, they continue to stay to educate our children. That's why our board always, we vote for raises every single year. It's never enough, but they deserve it. And anytime that we can show appreciation, we always do that. And I want to thank you on behalf of the entire board because we know what you do day in and day out. And if anything, we promise to do a better job to protect you and to serve you and to make sure that you all can have a safe environment to work in, free of judgment, free of assault, free of embarrassment, because you all deserve that from us. So thank you all for all that you do from the bottom of my heart. And with that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.